Okay, so welcome, welcome to our May 20th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kocovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. And Councilman Greeno's on his way, stuck on a train somewhere, on his way. So this portion of our meeting is called our conference agenda. We make public announcements, items that affect our community. And first on our list is our Relay for Life, which we invited Lisa Renwick and our team here to join Lisa to describe to the, you have to know that when, what can I give her first name, Taylor came to our council meeting, I don't know how many years it's been, three or four, five, Tracy, Taylor came, basically what she said was that you pitch a tent and sleep all night and out and walk all night, not sleep all night, you walk all night. And that's pretty much what it is. Just use the microphone, please, and tell.
Are we doing a proclamation this evening?
Thanks for that.
Yes, I can talk real quick, I'll give a quick snapshot of who we are, what we're doing, and then we could do our proclamation, which is just proclaiming that yes, in fact, we are hitting relay season, we're in the midst of it. Relay is an overnight walk that raises money to support folks who have lost or are surviving with cancer. Unfortunately, in this town, many people have been affected. We've just recently lost someone in the high school. Last year, we lost one of the policemen, and thankfully, we have many survivors that we are celebrating this night. So we're inviting the community to come out. There are school teams, the police has a team, the fire department has a team. We encourage, you know, churches, temples, sporting teams, whoever you are, Girl Scouts, come on out, walk, you don't have to stay overnight, there's something there for everyone. It is going to be educational and ceremonial, but also a lot of fun. And it is raising money for a great and important cause. One in three people will be diagnosed with cancer in their lifetime, and I'm sure if we had to do a raise of hands in this room, and we might as well, how many people know someone with cancer? Right? Which is why, this is why we're begging you to come out and join us this night, so that we can find a cure, so that in my children's lifetime, they don't even have to worry about this anymore. So I've left up a couple of brochures with some information. I also left track sign forms, so if you have a business in town, or not even, and you'd like to support us by having some advertising, there's some forms. You could purchase a luminaria, which is what we do, is we take these bags, and they get lit throughout the night when it's dark, and we do a lot of moments of silence. We scroll everybody's names in memory of, or in honor of, and you get to write if you'd like to do that, too, and those are $10, five extra dollars with the photo. And then I just left some postcards to just tell you where all the relay events are happening in the state of New Jersey, which by the way, there are 102 of them. So June 13th to 14th, here's our, one of our co-chairs, Catherine Ornstein, Vanessa Tobart, West Orange High School Team Captain, Josephine Pravitz, who is gung ho, Kami Wall, survivor extraordinaire. We just had a beautiful survivor breakfast at the zoo on Sunday, and you know, this is why we do what we do, to celebrate those and to let people know we're here to support them and their efforts. So thank you for always allowing us to come and do that, and we hope to see you then.
Please, come up, guys, yeah, high school. Everything's happening today at the high school. Hello. So on that note, Lisa, on behalf of the mayor and the township of West Orange, we are going to hereby proclaim June 1st, 2014, as the American Cancer Society's Paint the Town Purple Day throughout the township. So just as you saw, 95% of the people here raised their hands that we either know someone that has or has survived, or has succumbed to cancer. The township of West Orange is joining over 5,000 other communities nationwide to host the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life on June 13th and 14th. The overnight event celebrates cancer survivors and remembers those who are no longer with us. The relay raises funds to help American Cancer Society create a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, get well, find cures, and fight back. So Paint the Town Purple is an activity of the American Cancer Society that promotes cancer awareness and gives individuals and communities an opportunity to fight back. So here we are, the official kickback for Relay for Life of West Orange in this township will be June 1st.
Yeah, so if you like a poster, or you'd like to decorate your windows, your cars, you'd like a lawn sign, my information's up here, please email me, get in touch with us, because we can get that to you, and I'm a resident, obviously, too, so it makes it easy for me to stop by and drop that off to you. And thank you. You did that well.
Thank you.
This is also our 10th birthday celebration this year, so it's a big year, guys, a 10 year of celebration. Pete and Eli, get in. Everybody, come on, duck down, duck down, Joe, Joe, get him down. There he is. Look over here. Thank you. Thank you. She won. She's won. Never mind. I brought you a party gift.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass it on.
Well. Yes, he's done enough to help. Thank you. So good luck, team.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is, we wanted a presentation from Project Graduation, are there representatives here? Welcome. Can you give?
Hi.
Oh, hi, Dea, okay, nice.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
First, I'd like to thank you for inviting us.
You're welcome.
I'm here tonight, my name is Leslie Fleischer, I'm one of the co-chairs for Project Graduation, and I'm here tonight with Deidre Dyson, our PTA president, Lanta Maragney. I'm going to show you first, this is one of our 2014 lawn signs for Project Graduation. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about it. In 1989, the federal government provided aid to states across the country that was allocated to schools within each state. New Jersey was lucky enough to be issued $1,500, a $1,500 grant to West Orange High School. The initiative was to develop a positive program in which high school graduates could celebrate in an alcohol and drug-free environment. There were too many stories, as we know, each year of students who died in car accidents or overdosed on drugs. Project Graduation gives our seniors a place to party together one last time before they go off. The cost of Project Graduation keeps rising every year, it's approximately $40,000, and our students still have to pay $25 of that. By the time they get to the end of their senior year, some of them can't afford the $25 because their senior dues, and they owe for library books, and they just went to prom, and there are other things that are incurred. It is imperative that our township council, our community members, and our organizations support Project Graduation. It's bigger than just the PTA and our high school. It takes a community understanding of how important it is to keep our graduates safe. Project Graduation is now considered an ongoing commitment by communities throughout the nation. When Mr. Tarnoff and Principal Alguimento were at the high school, a lot of the parents who volunteered were involved for so many years, and they knew exactly what was going on with Project Graduation, and they supported it. Now we have so many new parents. I'm the parent of a senior and a freshman. And I volunteered to do this because going forward, I have three more years to continue to do fundraising to support Project Graduation. The monies that have been earned over the years have started to dissipate, and we haven't had enough community support where we've got enough money now going forward after the next two years to support Project Graduation. So we really need to encourage the new parents, incoming parents, purchasing a lawn sign, having the town really create an atmosphere where Project Graduation is something that everybody wants to participate in.
And donations.
And donations, that's a big part of it, a big part of it.
So here we have another proclamation here, and as Leslie said, the cost of Project Graduation keeps rising. Right now, it's approximately $40,000, and the students pay $25. You're right, they have other expenses in schools, and so the money's raised over the years. This has been sponsored, Project Graduation, I didn't realize, for 20 years. I feel old enough, because one of my preschoolers apparently is graduating high school right now, so it's been quite a number of years already, since she was three years old. So here we have a proclamation. Yes, thanks. So here again, we have a proclamation, on behalf of the mayor and township council. In honor of 2014 West Orange High School graduating class, we declare June 19th and 20th, 20th, West Orange High School Project Graduation Day throughout the township. And the, here's the idea is that the graduates, West Orange High School graduates graduate on Thursday, June 19th, and they will proceed to the Funplex in East Hanover to celebrate their graduation. Everyone can do it all together, and the idea is that no one is left out. We want every student to be included, every student to be safe on graduation night, so.
And these are the lawn signs, this is the application, will be on the back table outside the door, so feel free to take more than one and pass them out to your neighbors. And it's not, the lawn signs are not just for graduating seniors. If you have a child who's, you know, manipulating out of kindergarten, or out of fifth grade, or out of eighth grade into the high school, that all counts.
And often, people want to contribute, and they just don't know how. This is very easy, I think they're $20?
Fifteen.
Oh, $15, see, they're on sale. So $15 for a lawn sign, so that's a nice way to remember the day. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to say here, because also coming out of the high school, we have an invitation, open invitation, for everyone to join us next Monday for Memorial Day ceremony. Not sure how many years it's been, maybe someone, I don't really know how many years it is, maybe you have that in your notes here. And coming out of the high school, I wanted to introduce our ROTC commander cadet. There you go. So welcome, inviting everyone to the community.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Dylan Pennell, I am the leading cadet in the West Orange Junior Reserve Officers' Training Corps Program, and this year, I've been a privileged member of the Memorial Day Committee. And so before I begin, I'd just like to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the committee and the instructors at the high school. I'm here to announce this year's Memorial Day Ceremony on the 26th, this coming Monday. Whether if you've been to, if you've never been to a ceremony before, or if you've come every year since it's begun, there is a major change this year, which we'd like to announce. In the past, we've always presented the New Jersey Distinguished Service Medal to veterans that were in West Orange, and that's always been a nice honor. I mean, I remember, I think I was in seventh grade, my grandfather received that medal, and it was nice to see, just to know that we were paying respect to him and everyone else who served in this great town. But this year, instead, there's going to be enlistments, and we feel that this adds a new dynamic, because it allows not only to honor those who have moved on and fallen in combat, but also to show those who are willing to follow in their footsteps and are willing to carry on protecting the United States. And I believe it's 10 candidates for the Air Force are going to be enlisted on that day. So that's going to be a nice ceremony. So basically, we'd just like to see as many people come to pay respects to those who have fallen, and thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Good. Well, my turn.
Thank you.
Everyone is invited, 10 o'clock here in Town Hall. With the permitting, outside. 10 o'clock. School Tax Presentation with the mayor and business administrator. So we'll move on to our council liaison announcements, if we have anything to present. I have another invite, I'm going to start, please? Okay. I didn't see any hands up. Just last night, there was an opening reception for, from the West Orange Arts Council, for a manga artist, Paul Walcott. Manga is a Japanese word, it refers to using both comic style and cartooning, very popular. I didn't know the word until I got this invitation to attend the exhibit, it's at the West Orange Library. It started yesterday, and it runs through June 14th. And now that I know the word, I was in two different Barnes and Nobles in the state, and walking through the aisles, the bookshelves, I saw so many people holding books on this manga style. So must be something very detailed, beautiful style. So we invite everyone to come over to the library and take a look at our West Orange artist. Also, tomorrow night, there's a special planning board meeting tomorrow night here in council chambers for the proposed use of the Echo Restaurant on Northfield Avenue. Tomorrow also is a Chamber of Commerce, Community Networking Meeting at the Center for Spiritual Living. It's free, it starts at 5:30, 5:30 and 7:30. It's just the idea for the community and business owners to meet and greet. And the Environmental Commission meets this Thursday. Last night, there was an Essex County Green Team meeting at McLunes', that was the site at McLunes'. Maplewood hosted the event, and they received Sustainable Jersey Points for doing such a networking event. So we're looking forward to having more of those type of sharing ideas with different green teams in Essex County. The Environmental Commission meets here, again in Town Hall, 7 o'clock on the fourth Thursday of every month.
Thank you, Council President. The West Orange Historic Preservation Commission met recently, we discussed the potential impact of a proposed auto parts building on the parking lot, in the parking lot between Carl's Electronics and St. Mark's Church on Main Street. St. Mark's Church is obviously a historic building. The commission is working with the town to put together a request for proposals to execute on the $25,000 state grant to develop a survey of historical properties in the St. Cloud section and along Main Street. We're hoping to get that done as soon as possible. The commission meets in Town Hall at 7:00 PM on the second Wednesday of each month, and people with an interest in historic preservation and local architecture are welcome to attend. The West Orange Open Space Commission also had a meeting, and just wanted to note that several commission members were at the dedication Saturday of Ridgeway Park. It's a walking park funded by the town Open Space Trust Fund, which in turn is funded by a dedicated tax on West Orange property owners. And it's a beautiful park, it's a walking park, it's not someplace you go to, there are no swings, there are no playgrounds, anything like that, it's a very quiet place. And there is parking all along the streets that border the property. The commission recommended on a five to three vote to recommend to the town council to release funds to obtain a survey and two appraisals on a nine-acre property at 762 Pleasant Valley Way, near the interstate interchange, and we can talk, we'll be talking about that a little bit later in the meeting. The Open Space Commission meets in Town Hall, 7:00 PM on the second Monday of each month. I also wanted to just announce, for those of you who haven't heard, that the West Orange African Heritage Organization's annual Men Who Cook fundraiser is coming up. It's an event to raise funds for the Thomas Holcomb College Scholarships for West Orange High School seniors. We get chefs and civilians, like me, who can cook, sort of cook, from all over West Orange and New Jersey. We had about 30 last year, and the food literally comes from all over the world. It's wonderful. Deputy Town Attorney Ken Kaiser came last year, I think that was the first time for you, and he had a very, what I heard was a very popular dessert, but it was so good that it was gone before I got to it.
I'll be back.
So he can vouch. And I'll be back again this year with my Polish-American picnic, and my son, Thomas, I'm not sure what he's going to be doing. I'm proud to say that for a second year, I have not heard of anyone sickened by my dish, so please come and taste it. So we do need chefs. What you do is you pay an entrance fee, and then you can sample all the dishes you want, including the desserts. There are entertainments for, entertainment for kids of all ages, there's music, you see a lot of friends, and can make a lot of new ones. And one of the things that I think is really good about the event is that you get to hear from the outstanding young people who have been helped by these scholarships. They come back from school, a lot of them are coming back from, they're into their college, and they come and speak about what they're doing and how the scholarships have helped them. The event is Sunday, June 8th, so it's coming up, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, at St. Joseph's Church Parish Center on Benvenu Avenue. For those of you who don't know that, it's near the intersection of Prospect Avenue and Northfield Avenue. And you can get more information by going to W O A H O dot org website, you can go to the W O A H O Facebook page, and for information about getting applications or tickets, applications to be a chef or tickets, please contact Jan Carden, email address, Jan Carden, C, excuse me, J A N C A R D E N at Verizon dot net, and his number is 973-321-7741. I just also wanted, just briefly, to bring up a subject that I've been talking about periodically for the last, coming up on, I think, six months now, about my attempts to get basic information about our self-insured healthcare plan. I started in early December, asking for what I consider to be just basic information about what I believe is one of our largest single monthly expenditures, about $500,000 a month. Basically, who gets the money, how much do they get, why do they get it? And I've had, I've been given a limited amount of information, but in my opinion, the response has been woefully inadequate. A month ago, Mr. Gross, our chief financial officer, sent an email to our insurance consultant broker, Fairview Insurance, asking to schedule a conference call with me so that I could get the information. And I haven't heard back on that since, and so I thought I would take the opportunity to ask Mr. Gross, where does this call stand and why the delay?
I can't, I can't tell about why the delay, I know we did send out a request to them. I spoke to Mr. Sayers today about that, and indicated that he would reach out to them to find out, you know, what the delay might be, so.
Okay. That's all, Council President.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman, any announcements?
I just want to say that Saturday, June 7th, is a big day. Couple of weeks away, that would be three weeks away, we have a town picnic.
All right.
Yeah, you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Talk about it, come on.
My goodness.
Please, please.
Yeah, well, you started, Saturday, June 7th, wow.
It's a big day, there's a lot of events going on in town.
Go. Okay. Saturday, June 7th, is really Edison Day, and the Edison Museum, the site, the historical park, was selected three out of the state to celebrate New Jersey 350, 350 years of liberty, diversity, and innovation throughout the state. So because of that day, June 7th is always Edison Day, and it's free, and they always have a lot of activities at the museum. When we started putting our heads together and thinking it's going to become the town picnic on that day, so everyone can be, meet at the site. What else, the town picnic, Chamber of Commerce, downtown Eliza, oh, right, the Memorial Day, typically, the Memorial Day street fair now is being moved on to that date also on June 7th. I understand that there are vendor applications, if you would like to get a table to promote your business, promote your organization, or sell your wares at, on June 7th. It's from 11 to 7, I believe, right on Main Street.
Can you mention where the picnic is going to be held, so the public knows?
Right on Main Street, right, no, on Main Street, everything is right on Main Street at the Edison Museum.
The Edison Site. And the township employees will be there from 1 to 4.
And just like the annual town picnic, every department is represented, if you have any questions, they will each have a table, each department will have a table to answer any questions, welcome new residents, and old. It's really, hopefully, the weather holds out, and it really is a great day for the township.
Yeah, it started as a new residents picnic.
Yes.
Right? And it's evolved into like, everybody, you know, let's get together, let's meet our neighbors.
So from one end of the corridor to the other, because also, Valley Arts on June 7th is also having their street fair. So you can go right down the Main Street, Valley Corridor, a lot of things going on. They had a very successful street fair last year, and they are doing it again this year. So June 7th, save the date. Thank you, Victor, sorry.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements?
I have no announcements, thank you.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk of the township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kocovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
So first on our agenda is public comment. If anyone has a announcement, concern, issue you'd like to raise, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Thank you, ma'am.
I'd personally like to go first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jim.
EMS.
Your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. James Troisi, president, West Orange First Aid Squad.
Thank you.
EMS, Dedicated for Life. This is the theme of this, the 40th year of National EMS Week, a commemoration intended to raise public awareness of the critical role emergency medical responders play around the country. Quoting from a proclamation by the President of the United States, "This week, we thank the EMS providers who ease suffering and so often mean the difference between life and death. Let us honor their service with a renewed commitment to them. Let us ensure that those who watch over our communities have the support they need to get the job done." From Governor Christie's proclamation, "Whereas each year, more than 3 million resident and visitors require emergency medical care." And from New Jersey Commissioner of Health, Mary O'Dowd's proclamation. And from New Jersey Commissioner of Health Mary O'Dowd's proclamation, "More than 28,000 EMS providers throughout New Jersey for their commitment and dedication to service. More than 3 million patients, more than 28,000 personnel. And yet, we, we in EMS remain the most misunderstood of all public servants." Seriously, who pays thousands of dollars for training, spends several months in school, and then works for free dealing with injury, disease, suffering, and misery? Volunteer EMTs have to be nuts. The deadline for submissions for BLS services has passed. And if you are not already, you should all be aware that the West Orange First Aid Squad did not submit a bid. The grapevine has it that several of the people in this room or within the township administration are perplexed or even angry. And I assure you that none are more beside themselves than we are. There are apparently misgivings and frankly misinformation being circulated, and facts have most certainly been omitted. Last week, Mr. Trank spoke with the squad's attorney, Kathleen Banker, and indicated that we would not be permitted to meet with Mayor Perici or members of the township council privately. So we'll do it publicly. Why didn't Wolfis submit? When the original bid spec was published in January, there were a number of items that simply did not ring correct with us. We were concerned that there might be legal issues with what was to be required within the responses. At the mandatory pre-bid meeting in February, ourselves and even other potential vendors posed questions that municipal officials stated they would answer in writing the following week. Those responses took several weeks. That's not the concern. But while awaiting those responses, we exercised due diligence by consulting with four different attorneys from two different law firms. One firm, Page, Wolfburg &amp; Worth, devotes their entire practice to EMS law and is recognized nationally in the EMS industry as the preeminent experts in compliance matters. All four attorneys, including the senior-most partner at Page, Wolfburg &amp; Worth, provided us with virtually identical legal opinions. Provisions of the original bid spec had significant potential to violate both state and federal anti-kickback statutes. We believed then, and we still believe, that the prudent course of action was to seek an opinion from the United States Office of the Inspector General. While it would take a few months to receive a response, there would be no cost to anyone. And the opinion would be binding and would protect both the successful vendor and the township from any future civil or criminal penalties if the bid spec was found to violate Medicare or Medicaid regulations. Understand that when the OIG serves sanctions, both parties in the contract pay the price. When the township indicated they would not delay the bid spec for the opinion, Wolfis did indeed file for an injunction pending an OIG inquiry. Our intent was simple, obtain a legally abiding opinion that would protect the vendor and the township. Prior to a judge being able to rule on the injunction, however, the township issued Addendum Number Five to the RFP. In this addendum, all the legal arguments and issues that were raised in the original bid spec were removed, and this should have cleared the way for Wolfis to bid. However, also changed in Addendum Number Five was the distribution of call volume. As written in bid spec number five, the successful vendor will only be dispatched to medical emergencies if and when all three fire department ambulances are committed to other calls. In essence, there would have to be four simultaneous emergencies in order for Wolfis to be dispatched to a single call. Financially, this is unsustainable, and we were therefore precluded from bidding. In fact, we urge you to exercise serious caution in evaluating a proposal from any vendor that is willing to staff and maintain an ambulance 24/7, presumably for exclusive West Orange use under such an arrangement. There would almost have to be some other agenda or regional intent for any company to be willing to risk such a significant loss. So it follows that we were likely to prevail on an OIG opinion. Why else, after receiving two postponements, would such sweeping changes be made to the RFP? We believe that the modification in call distribution was a childish tit-for-tat scenario, with the thought process being you'll take what we give you or you'll be out of business. Add to that that all versions of the RFP called for Wolfis to forfeit more than half the building, which we have occupied exclusively for more than 40 years. We are a proud, nonprofit charitable organization that has served this community admirably for half a century. Look back at the council meetings from 1995 to 1998 and see that after much deliberation, the building at 25 Mount Pleasant Place was renovated and dedicated for our use. A plaque saying as much hangs in the building, it reads, "The renovation of this building is dedicated to the many loyal and devoted volunteer members of the West Orange First Aid Squad," unquote. A recent RFP for hazardous abatement voted on by this council actually denotes the structure as the First Aid Squad building.
Your time is up.
I have one more paragraph on the chair, if it'll indulge me. It was Wolfis that absorbed the cost of the building's keyless entry system. It was Wolfis that paid for the composite floor throughout the Bay Areas. It was Wolfis that designed and equipped the second-floor conference room with monies from an endowment left to us by a resident. And it is Wolfis that has a $175,000 ambulance ready for delivery for exclusive use in the township. We will not be relegated back into a situation where men and women have to share a bunk room and a shower stall. We won't sit quietly at the kids' table to be told what we can and cannot have to eat. Come October, we can celebrate 50 proud years of service that saved the residents and taxpayers of this township tens of millions of dollars, or we can dissolve. Fortunately or unfortunately for us, which it'll be, is in the hands of our elected officials. I thank you for allowing me to go over time.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments?
Yes.
We're up to public comment, yes.
Christine Mason from Mason Place, Bosco, I'm sorry. I have concerns about something that transpired today up at the Essex House property. And of course, I'm only 25 feet. I'm only 25 feet from that slope, which is a deep slope. It's over a 30-foot drop. And I spoke with Lenny Lepore, Lenny was very helpful. However, this started at 9:00 this morning, and it continued until I actually left now, of the cutting down of trees on the slope. Now, my understanding is that the Essex House is no longer doing their development, but going to do, you know, go back to the restaurant format and so on. And that they are to put in for a retaining wall, because at, there is, at one section of that, there is no retaining wall that was removed years ago by someone. I'm not going to accuse anyone, but they cut it back to, for additional parking and never did anything about the retaining wall. The issue I have is because my property is so close to this property and this slope, is that the cutting down of these trees were done before, my understanding is the retaining wall needs to be reviewed by an engineer before they can put up this retaining wall. And that John Linson allowed and gave permits to cut these trees before any permit or approval was given for a retaining wall. So what are we looking at now? We're looking at an exposed slope with a lot, I mean, if we have major flooding, we could have major soil erosion on that slope. I'd like you to go up there and take a look at it, because it's pretty bad. And according to our ordinance, John Linson did not follow what was required. And I'm extremely upset about this, because this should never have happened. And I called Lenny this morning, and I spoke to Lenny about it. And Lenny will confirm that they do not have any plans in for approval on a retaining wall. I don't understand, and I have the ordinance in front of me, our land use regulations, and it says, when it comes to something like this with the steep slope and, you know, vegetation and where it causes health and safety and welfare of existing residents, noise levels, air, air quality destruction, disturbance of wildlife, habitat, so forth and so on, and a retaining wall is above six feet, which this, or five feet or whatever it is, which this would require, because it is a sleeper slope, that there is certain guidelines in our ordinances to follow. Now, John Linson's been with us how many years? Is he this naive and been this, this long?
I'm not going to talk about the personnel.
Okay, but you know, Susan, I have.
In this venue, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
But you know what? I feel, as a taxpayer who's paying, plays towards his salary, that he should be let go. Okay? That's my feeling.
Thank you.
Because he did not follow the ordinance. And what transpired here could jeopardize, you know, it could have an effect in the neighborhood and in properties and so forth. And it was not appropriate in what happened. It really isn't. I don't mean to come up here and complain, but I'm sure if it was in your backyard, Susan, you'd be livid.
I understand, and I'm saying, you're bringing it to our attention. Thank you for bringing it to our intention, attention, and now we can investigate.
And I'd like to know, I'd like to know, how is the town going to resolve this? Because we're sitting there without any retaining wall with all those trees gone. What is the town going to do to resolve this issue? And also, according to our ordinance, anyone who violates these ordinances is subject to penalties. Why is the Essex House not being subject to penalties?
You don't know that, and we don't know that, so.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to know what's going on there.
We can find out. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and now we can investigate.
And this is not the first time that I have called that the Essex House has ignored an ordinance. I called Jack Sayers, of course, Jack's not here tonight, but I called Jack Sayers, probably going back about a month or two. And it's in reference to, the Essex House was sanding the trolley car, which has lead paint on it. There was no tarp thrown across, over the top to contain that lead paint, nothing. I had to call Jack. Jack sent somebody up there, he told him to do it. They threw a tarp up there, and I had to call Jack back because the winds were so high, the tarp was being blown right off of it, and they're sanding away. This is the quality of the air in our neighborhood with lead paint. Thank you. And it's all because certain ordinances are not being applied, and when someone is doing something that is against the ordinance, it should be stopped. It should not be allowed. I don't know where the ball falls here, but I do know Mayor Perici.
Your time is up.
Is the mayor of the town, and therefore, I'd say the ball falls in his court as the manager of the mayor of the town. Okay? So I'm, I'm really extremely upset, and I'm hoping that this gets resolved and that something transpires here. And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that there's no repercussions from what has occurred, because this won't be the last of it that you'll hear from me. And why, the second thing why I'm up here, this is a good thing, I called the police department about a week ago, 10:30, 11:00 o'clock at night, there was a vacant car parked in the woods next to my house, the adjacent property. Police officers were excellent, they came right away, handled the situation very, very, you know, they were great guys, the two guys that came up, and I wanted to praise them for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we can investigate it.
Good evening. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I've got to say, the news about the first aid, first aid squad is very disturbing, and the other news about cutting down trees is not something I'm excited to hear about. But I wanted to actually talk about a couple of things that came up at the last council meeting. One of the first times I was ever in this chamber for council proceeding was back in February 2009 for the budget hearing. That year, the council wasn't reviewing a budget proposal that included a 0% tax levy increase. The increase in 2009 was about 4% over 2008, and that was on top of tax levy increases in five of the preceding years, going back to 2003 when I bought my house, that totaled more than 63%. Since my taxes were skyrocketing, I wanted to get a better idea of where the money was being spent. But that all-day hearing was just the first step in the budget process, and the 2009 budget wasn't actually approved until September of that year. In fact, for the last six or seven years, I don't believe any municipal budget received final council approval earlier than mid-June, and most were in August or September. So I really don't understand why Mr. Sayers was insisting at the last meeting that statutory requirements impelled the council to vote on the budget that night. I'd very much like Mr. Sayers to give an explanation of what was the urgency, but he's not available to answer my question, because for the second time in a few months, he's left the council meeting to be with Mayor Perici at one of the mayor's Tax Fact presentations, this time at Gregory School. But perhaps Mr. Gross or Mr. Kaser could answer my question. Also, I'd like to seek some clarification on some comments made at the last meeting about how capital improvement projects, like the resurfacing of the soccer field at the high school, which took place during a year with no capital budget, was actually paid for with debt that was issued and taxpayers paid for years ago. I took some time to go back and watch the video of the council meeting of December 4th, 2012. At that meeting, the two ordinances authorizing the reallocation of approximately $3.3 million in old unused capital debt was introduced. At the meeting, there was some confusion on the part of the council and the public about where that money was coming from. Initially, it seemed some people thought all the money was coming from bonds that had already been issued, going back as far as 1998, and that taxpayers were already paying the debt service on them. However, Mr. Gross clarified and stated that about half of that money had been authorized by previous councils, but actually had never been issued. So while revising the existing bond ordinances to handle other projects did save taxpayers' money by not requiring a 5% down payment for new bonds, I believe that taxpayer repayment of that debt service didn't begin until 2013, when the actual projects were authorized and funded. But again, perhaps Mr. Gross could give us a better explanation of all this. And finally, I hope to hear a report from the administration on the status of the energy aggregation program that I requested at the last meeting. In the interim, I've spoken to several residents who said they too are curious about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. I'll just be very brief, just one thing I want to share with everyone tonight, and remind you, May 31st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM is the Essex County Open House at Turtleback Zoo. It's free admission. We'll have displays and information about all the county offices, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. If you can't make it from 10:00 to 2:00, the free admission does extend all day, so if you come after that, you can still walk in and enjoy the exhibits that we have there. More information on that and all other county events is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. Thank you.
That's it. Great, thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. Really don't know what to say to the first aid squad.
Well, Council President, maybe I should speak before.
I do, it sounds like a legal matter.
On this subject. First of all, with respect to the incident at the Essex House today, there was a flurry of emails today. I know that there were complaints made. We certainly have cited the Essex House for violations in the past. We have not been shy with them about those violations. We've dealt with them fairly sternly. Whether there were violations today or not, I can't speak to. As you indicated, we have to investigate the facts. I'm sure the administration has begun doing that. And so I think that you should be careful and reserve your comments about that for that reason. With respect to the first aid squad, as all of you know, they sued the township, the council, and so forth. That suit was resolved in Superior Court in New Jersey, and the township was successful. There was an order issued on May 8th denying the application for declaratory and permanent injunctive relief. The appeal period is not run, so we're still technically in litigation with the first aid squad. So I would urge the council to either not talk about it at all or be very careful about what you say, because we don't know if this litigation is completely over or not. At this point, it's not. I don't know if there'll be any questions that I can answer about that. I didn't handle the litigation, but I just want to put the council on notice that the litigation is still pending.
Thank you. Sean, I think that leaves the ball in your court, because I know we did ask, I did ask you that if you did have the energy aggregation numbers together to answer this question. question that came up at our last council meeting, that you would be able to do that.
Yeah, we actually have not been able to get a handle on that yet. But we'll, we'll certainly have it by the next meeting.
Okay.
And as soon as we do get it, we'll send it out to the council, so the council's aware.
All right. Thank you. And, and the question about the old capital improvement at the high school, can...
Yeah, I can, I can address that. And I, I don't have, uh, I, I can't try to get online. I can't get online to, to look. Uh, but, but the report made, about half of the capital that, uh, was authorized at that point in time was reallocated from funding, from sources that had been funding, and about half from not. Where this particular one, I don't recall off the top of my head. But certainly, um, in the sense that is indicated, there was a saving, a support in terms of saving the 5%, um, um, down payment money, as well as increasing the amount of our debt, um, you know, whatever impacts that may have had with the financial markets, which I quite frankly believe would be not, not too significant. But nonetheless, that, that certainly was an important aspect of that, is was not authorized in addition to that, other than what was offered.
And the other comment that was made, and we also had this conversation about adopting the budget, that there is a state statute on when the, and yes, in fact, it has been later in the year, but there is a state statute.
There's statute, there's statutory timeframes, and quite frankly, over the years, we've received pressure, uh, from the Division of Local Government Services to adopt, uh, you know, as, as time went on, as, as we, as we continued to work on our budget. Uh, since I've been here, I know there have been, um, for the most part, the budgets were, most of the budget was in place very early on, and there were some changes that occurred towards the end. Some in, in, you know, one year perhaps could have been done earlier, uh, but we were waiting to, to see what else may have happened. And the other years, obviously, we, we, things happened during the year that allowed us to come back and reduce the budget. In this year, being at zero, I know that the mayor was in favor of moving forward with it, uh, being at zero at the point in time where, if you recall, certainly since I've been here, uh, we've not been at the final stages, uh, at this time. But this, if, this year, with the possibility of, of really adopting within, um, the timeframes that, that, certainly, the intention of the statutes, allows us to get out a, a, instead of a, a estimated tax bill, an actual tax bill, uh, so that we don't, we don't have the expense of the extra mailings, which is not insignificant. Um, so, and, and quite frankly, it allows us to, to really do business this year and accomplish things during this year, as opposed to waiting and trying to cram everything into the last quarter of the year, which quite frankly is not efficient. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to have been adopted early. Uh, and, you know, to the extent that the council was satisfied with the zero increase in the amount to be raised by taxation, it just seemed to make sense to move forward.
To adopt it, right. Thank you. Any other comments?
If I could, Mr. Gross, the, I remember Mr. Sayers saying this, that there were statutory requirements, and, and the speaker during public comment asked about what are the statutory requirements? Could you just perhaps be a little bit more clear on what the statutory requirements are?
Well, you're supposed, and, and don't hold me to the exact dates, because I don't have it in front of me. But you're, the, the statutory requirement's, you introduce by February 10th, and you adopt sometime near the end of April. That's the statutory. Those, the Division of Local Government Services has, over the last 10 years that I'm aware of, and I may go back further than that, have extended those timeframes into, you know, basically near the end of March, uh, and then sometime in May, uh, for, or end of April, beginning of May for adoption. So we introduced, in, in, in the first meeting in April, which is in, in accordance with the, um, policies of the Local Government Services, if they set a date, and then you have a meeting, irregular meeting date after that, that's, is within the timeframe. So we are basically within the timeframe. Certainly, we were not receiving pressure to adopt. So, but, but we were, were interested in adopting within where the statutes, um, or at least the division was, was looking for us to do. So, I mean, that's, I don't think that we can be criticized for trying to comply with the statute. Uh, you know, if the obvious, if the council was not satisfied with a zero increase in the budget, um, then, you know, certainly, we could have taken longer and, and based on the guidance given by council, as to really, but, um, where should go from there?
So, I, just since I've been paying attention to the budget the last five years, we've never done it this early that I can recall. Wh- wh- is there any pen, has there been any penalties against us because we adopted most of these budgets in the fall?
In theory, there's financial penalties, but that's never been assessed to anybody that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I do have a few comments. About WOFUS, I, I don't know enough about this litigation to, to, to comment, so I think I'm pretty safe there. But I just want to repeat what I've been saying during this whole process, which is that I don't, I, I just remain perplexed about, from what all I know, why the administration is trying, appears to be trying to put one of the great things, I would say, one of the greatest things about living in West Orange, basically out of business. And I, I request, uh, that we have, we, the council have an executive session, which is not open to the public, so that we, before the next council meeting, so that we can understand better about the reasons why we would be doing this. I've, uh, I've, I've commented this before, and Mr. Troisi said, pointed out, that these are volunteers, and, uh, it's just a whole lot less expensive for us to use WOFUS as much as possible than, uh, our, our, members of our fire department. There's nothing against the members of our fire department, except that they are paid a lot more than, than WOFUS is. So, uh, I, I just remain perplexed about this. Mr. Kizer, you mentioned that it was, this was a May 8th decision, and there's still an appeal period. When does the appeal period end?
I believe, uh, honor about June 24th.
And does that have any impact on how we are moving ahead with the, uh, with the request for, I'm not sure whether it's a request for proposals or a request for...
My understanding is that there were bids received, um, that there's a committee that's considering those bids. Bids under the competitive contracting rules, and I assume that there'll be a presentation to the council at some point. I don't know how long that might take.
Okay. Thank you. I, I was involved somewhat with Ms. Bosco and the Essex House today. I went over there about 3 o'clock today and saw what was easily 30 trees that had been cut down, uh, from the, I guess, the eastern, I'm sorry. I'm trying to...
Northern.
Trying to get oriented. Directions aren't, uh, my strong point. Uh, from the northern part of the property, um, and I contacted the administration. Uh, Mr. Lepore said that, that the Essex House has a tree removal permit that is associated with repairing and reconstruction of the timber retaining walls. Uh, they don't have a permit to rebuild or repair, or even touch the wall, and, uh, and that they will, let's see. The owner will need to file for building permits, which will also need the zoning official's approval, and may, depending on the amount of disturbance, require approval of the local soil conservation district. Uh, and then he sent an email late today that, that, uh, said that, um, he will follow up with Mr. Lindson tomorrow on some of the issues that, that, uh, Ms. Bosco raised. And, and I would certainly request that, uh, we have a, a presentation or at least a follow-up at the next council meeting to, to find out, uh, what exactly happened here, and just to make sure that we are following our own ordinances and our, our rules and procedures. I don't want to put Mr. Lepore on the spot, um, because I think he's, he's, uh, still got some work to do, but I think by the next council meeting, we should have, uh, some information, uh, about that. That's all, Council President. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman?
I have nothing else to add, and just for the record, I have to recuse myself from the first aid squad. My son Ralph is a member.
Thank you.
Council President, yeah. I do want to recognize the work of the, uh, volunteer, uh, first aid squads throughout the country. Thank you for bringing that and educating us on the fact that it's a national EMS week. Appreciate that, and I think that'll give us a perspective as we go around, um, you know, other municipalities, uh, our, our everyday lives, and make sure that, uh, if we see somebody, you know, we thank them. Some of my, I have friends that do that, you know, do that kind of volunteer work, and I wasn't aware of it, so I just want to thank you for that. Uh, it sounds like some of the issues that have been brought up, uh, have been addressed as it relates to the Essex House, as it relates to the first aid squad. Um, then, you know, we have received documentation, and we're looking into that issue, and, uh, as it relates to the procurement process, we talked about the bidding process. We just want to make sure that we're in line with the, uh, local public contract law, and I'll make sure that, that, uh, we review that, and, and that we're being consistent. I'm sure that, uh, as, as it relates to the Essex House, as, as the attorney presented or spoke, uh, we have been proactive in the past, that we haven't shied away should we see any violations, and I'm sure that, that should there exist other, additional violations or, um, an issue, that the township will, uh, will do what it has to do as it rela, as it relates to, um, uh, making sure that, that the business is being compliant. Uh, and, uh, we'll keep an eye out, and we'll, we'll be doing our follow-up on our end. So, um, and don't forget, the, the, uh, county executive representative spoke about the zoo open house of, uh, May 31st. A lot of the traffic that comes in, uh, we hopefully, as a community, can take advantage of, and they can, uh, uh, visit some of our local businesses. So I urge not only, uh, local, uh, families, but, uh, if we have friends outside in other communities to come out on, uh, May 31st, as, uh, Mr. Puglisi stated, from 10:00 AM to, uh, 2:00 PM, Turtleback Zoo, open house. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first of all, my apologies to the members of, at the meeting tonight, and to the first aid squad for being late. I'm sorry, New Jersey Transit had one of its, you know, hiccups. Uh, you know, I, I thank you, and I know most of you, I've known most of you a long time. I thank you for your service at the township of West Orange. I hope everything else goes through. I hope everything is talked out that every, to everybody's satisfaction. But of course, as Mr. Kizer said, it's something we shouldn't discuss, but I want you to personally know that I thank you for what you do to the town, for the township. Um, on the thing with the tree removal and everything else, I'm sure Mr. Lepore will report back to the council through the council president, and we don't have, we should not have to ask. We should be updated within a legitimate timeframe. Uh, I can expect to see how this is being resolved, and what permits, and what violations were done, and how they're going to be resolved. Again, to Mr. Puglisi, thank you. Uh, we should make, you know, use of it. It's a good attraction for the township, as well as the, uh, residents of all the surrounding communities. And it's a great thing. People should come out and see what's available right within their backyard. Uh, I don't know if it was mentioned, and again, I apologize, Council President, for not being here in conference session, uh, that they, of course, you mentioned Relay for Life, so I hope we, you know, we have, we have a good turnout. It's, it's a great thing to do, you know? A lot of us are personally touched by, by cancer, and a lot of us feel an obligation that we, we have to beat this thing, and we will. Also, we have, coming up on June 7th, is the downtown, uh, street fair. Uh, it's going to be a fantastic, uh, presentation between the Edison National Park, uh, between the Downtown Alliance and, and the Public Relations Committee. I, I recommend everyone in the township come down and see. Take a look at Main Street, see what's going on. Uh, get a good glimpse and a free view of the Edison Park. Uh, sample some food that's going to be around, and all the organizations that have information to hand out, so, uh, come down. I hope it's a good day. It'll be a good turnout, and, uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add, on behalf of the, the administration, just to categorically say, um, that it's not the, anyone that I'm aware of in the administration, or anywhere, for, quite frankly, has any intent to do anything to put the rescue squad out of business or to do anything, anything like that. That's just not our, the intention that, that, that anyone that I've ever seen is going through this process, and quite frankly, I've been through the, it involved the most of the entire process. So I, I think it's important that, to say that, that, um, on behalf of the administration.
I think I was just going to say the same thing, and the services from the first aid squad have never been in question, and that's why the bidding was open to everyone. I do know that the first aid billing committee is scheduled to meet very soon, so we will have more, uh, information once that evaluation takes place, so that we can open these lines of communication better.
If I could, Council President, that, that may not be the attention, but that certainly seems to be the potential effect that's been going on here for months. Uh, the, the first aid squad has come and spoken to us before about, uh, having difficulties getting, getting calls back when they converted over, uh, to a full-fledged, um, I don't even know the, the, the correct terminology, but they, uh, raised their game and started, uh, having regular, uh, crews that were available and weren't able to, uh, keep those guys busy. And then came this, this, uh, proposal to bid out, uh, EMS service in town and...
Councilman, I'm going to respectfully ask you to, that we have been advised not to discuss this, and let's leave it at that until we get more information.
I, I respectfully, uh, decline your request, because a, a lot of this stuff has already been talked about, and it's not part of the litigation. But, uh, but I'm sorry...
But it's a difference of opinion. And it's a difference of opinion. And we've already said that...
Maybe, maybe the councilman would want to express the fact that these are his views and not the, the views of the entire council. It, uh, it protects us from any liabilities that may arise out of his commentary.
If, if I can, I just had a short conversation with council. Um, just, I think it's very important to understand that, and to the extent that this is initiated, it was initiated, um, based on, um, a decision for, to go from a volunteer status to, to charging, you know, insurance companies for the services, which led administration to look into the legalities of that, and what the impacts of that were, and what that meant. And that, so that's where it started. It certainly did not start with an intention, uh, and to the extent that it, that the, the circumstances lead into different directions, it's, that's the focal point. That's, that, that was the crux of, of, of what started that. And I assume, I'm only going to assume that this, on behalf of the squad, that that started, because there, you know, like many other squads across this nation, have ran into difficulties with being able to provide the services without doing some hiring, not, not eliminating all its volunteer work, but doing some hiring to, to, uh, be able to do the fine work that they do. So, that's what started this. Um, not the, not based, not anybody's, no, no one really, uh, took aim on, on anybody or any, any entity in doing this. And, you know, we, we got here how we got here, and now we have to figure out where we're going.
Right. My understanding. Thank you.
But Council President, I, may I, and, but, I mean, I understand the councilman's concern, you know, information, uh, this is our perception, that, that, you know, that he's expressing. Uh, but I do want to ask our attorney, perhaps, if some of us may be interested in additional information, uh, how, how do we go about that as council members? We have had access to, uh, certain legal documents, um, but should we want to look a little bit deeper, uh, to, to, to try to address some of the questions that we may have personally as elected officials? How do we go about that?
I think it's really a matter at this point for the administration. I mean, it's a legal matter. It's in court. The court's made a decision that's subject to appeal, uh, and it's really no longer a council consideration at this point. You're going to have additional things to consider once the bidding process goes forward, uh, and everybody's made the choices that they've made, and, you know, now we're all going to have to live with them and deal with them. But I don't think it's really, I mean, beyond reading the materials that have been provided, I'm not sure what else you're really looking for, or what else we, you could be given.
Sure. I'm, I'm just looking from the sense of, uh, making sure that the local public contract law, or that the specs, you know, what this, whether the specs are, are not consistent with any...
That was already...
The judge, the judge made a ruling with respect to that.
The judge made a ruling on that. That was resolved on May...
And, and certainly, once we go through a process and administration makes a recommendation to you, whatever that recommendation may be, but we have no idea what that will be. But once we go through that process, I certainly, at that point in time, we can, I would hope we'll be in a position to, uh, answer questions about the process that you proposed.
Councilman, to that very point, I had asked for an executive session on tonight's agenda so that we could discuss this further, but there was really nothing at this point to discuss. So when we do get the recommendations of the committee, then we can, we would have more information to go by.
Are you saying that my request to have an executive session before the next council meeting is going to be declined? I certainly have plenty of questions that I'd like to ask.
Yeah, that's where we'll have an executive session at the next council meeting. That's what we're saying. I had asked for one this evening, and they said because of this, had already, this case had already, already been resolved in the Superior Court. On February 8th, there was nothing discussed...
May 8th.
May 8th, uh, to discuss it tonight. But after the committee meets, we can certainly have an executive session. Madam Clerk?
Review the consent agenda. Approval of meeting minutes, public meeting, May 6th, 2014. Review the consent agenda, approval of meeting minutes, public meeting May 6, 2014. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
None.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I would like to pull resolutions D and E.
D as in David?
D as in David, and E.
Anyone else?
Anyone else, any other resolutions?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
We have no ordinances on second and final reading and no ordinance on first reading. So my question really is for our township engineer on resolution D. Lenny, please. So Lenny, this is the resolution that proposes the improvement of streets, Nestro, Mayfair. I just, my question is that you sat in on the meeting with the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission last week, and I just, we were talking about up, saying upgrading our stormwater regulations. Will those upgrades or anything, can any of that be included in this proposal?
At, at this time, these are just for actually design, professional design services for improving existing streets, predominantly fixing the paving or milling and repaving the streets. In some cases, there's curb improvements, in one case, there's a sanitary sewer improvement. So I, I don't think some of the recommendations that, that they would make for trying to hold back some, I'll call it, the, the initial flush of rainfall wouldn't be incorporated.
Not, not right now, okay. But moving forward?
Moving forward, perhaps on, on other streets or, or other areas of town.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the other resolution that we have that I would like to discuss is the resolution from the Open Space Commission.
Do you want to give a motion to?
A motion to approve.
If, if I could, I just had a question or two about, we were just talking about, I'm sorry.
Ninety-five, dash, fifteen.
Yes, ninety-fourteen.
Fifteen.
Mr. Lepore, as you probably know, the council got an email from a resident of Overlook over on the south side of town who has been pretty vocal and articulate, I think, about his feeling that Overlook is in such disrepair that it needs to be considered for some of these, these projects. And I think I've, I think I've asked before, but maybe if you could just explain how we came about to, to not really overlook, overlook, but to decide that that wasn't something that was something that needed to be done right now.
Well, first of all, what I want to say is your sense of direction for Overlook was, was right on. Two, Overlook Avenue would be a street that I would definitely include for 2015. One of the things we do when we look at streets and, and unfortunately, with, with some of the lack of a full capital budget the past few years and some of the winters, particularly this past winter, streets are deteriorating. I know there was some concern, I'm not quite getting to your, your question or answering your question yet, there's some concern about some of the work done on Aspen Road. If you look at Aspen Road, you could see some of the effects on, on a new pavement just becoming so apparent on a new pavement from, from this winter. So our streets are deteriorating, we look at, you know, we, we can rate streets, we look at the overall condition of streets, look at, for example, the cracking on the street, pothole repairs on the street, even when maybe we last improved the street. Those are a lot of the factors that go into the list of making, or making a determination of whether a street is on our list. There's close to 100 miles of streets. Again, we're, we're barely making a dent in what's necessary on this, but, but you're right about Overlook Avenue, it is a street that does need improvement, and I would certainly put that on my 2015 list. One of the biggest concerns I have with that street isn't necessarily the pavement, but the impact that any project that involves curb replacement is going to have on, on the trees on that street. And I think that's something for discussion with the residents. We don't have to take all the curb out by the trees, we can leave it. I think if we're going to do any curb work, most of those trees are going to have to go. And I think it's something to, to discuss with the neighborhood and just weren't really in a position to, to get that resolved this year on that street. But again, Overlook Avenue would be a street I'd definitely consider or would place in the 2015 list.
But in your opinion, all the streets that we're looking at for this year's program are worse off than?
I'd say equal or, or worse.
I think I believe that I copied my colleagues on that email, also my response to that gentleman on Overlook, after having the same conversation about the curb line and the trees, and it's significantly more work on that particular street, and that, that it would be certainly a priority in 2015.
And I think what, what people maybe don't always fully realize is the extent and the breadth of, of this town, and very often when they see streets being done around them and not theirs, they just wonder where, where they appear on that improvement list and why they were skipped or why they were left out. So eventually, it, it does all come around.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lepore, do you have like a matrix of how you decide a road's improvement, like say, the last time it was paved?
Yeah, I, I can get you information that goes, goes into that.
Correct.
And it needs to be, especially after this winter, reevaluated for everything except the streets we paved in the past few years.
A resident asked if we're paving the rest of Hillside, that's what's included in the, in this print, correct?
The rest of, of Hillside is included and the one block of Wellington.
Right.
Between Hillside and Gregory.
Perfect. So there's some residents asking questions in that area because they know half was done prior.
Correct.
When the, when construction. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve resolution ninety-five, dash, fifteen?
Second.
Councilman Sivella?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I called resolution E, also, this is a resolution authorizing the Open Space and Recreation Committee to, they are seeking appraisals for 762 Pleasant Valley Way. This is approximately 10 acres. I wanted to ask, this is a question for the administration or township engineer, that they're looking for appraisals, and an appraisal to me seems that, you know, I guess we're looking to purchase it, but in an appraisal itself doesn't really give you hydrology, topography of the land. And would it be possible to change this, not, change this resolution to, or to do this in state, in phases? That the first phase would be a survey, and the survey would give us any environmental constraints that are on this ten acre, I'm looking at Lenny hoping he has an answer, but, so I'm looking to change this resolution to see if we could do it in, say, phases, that once, ask for a survey, not an appraisal, because an appraisal really just gives us the perimeter, not all of the details that we need for the mapping details that we need to finally decide if we should or should not purchase this.
Couple things. First of all, and Lenny can answer that question in part, but I just want to make clear that this resolution basically is to gauge the council's interest in this property at all. Because if you vote against it, then you're basically saying, we're not interested in purchasing this property as open space. If you vote for it, all you're really doing is saying, administration, go forward and, and get the professionals that are needed, whatever they are, in order to evaluate the property, determine what it would cost, so that you can then determine whether it would be actually worthwhile doing this or not, whether it's feasible.
But I think that's, that's my point. My point is that an appraisal is not going to give us that. A survey will give us that information and then we can move forward.
But it says a survey in here.
I understand.
Right, but it would be a survey plus the cost of an appraisal, so I'm asking for just a survey.
It indicates the survey and the appraisal, because it was my understanding from Joe McCartney that that's what Lenny Lepore recommended at the meeting. I wasn't at the meeting, but that was the indication. If there are other services that are needed, I don't see any reason why we can't pursue them, and frankly, we'll probably follow Lenny's lead as to exactly what's needed.
So Lenny, we have had this conversation, so you know what I feel. I feel that for the 10 years that I've been on the planning board, the 10 years that this, more than 10 years, that we have discussed this property, there are wetlands, there are so many restrictions on this property. An appraisal is not going to give us that information. So before we move forward, trying to decide if we want to purchase this property, what I would like the council to consider is asking for a survey so that we have all of the constraints before we do both. Once we get that information and we find out that maybe, I don't know what the percentage would be, that it might not be in best interest of the township to pay for this.
Well, certainly, I, I would not solicit proposals for appraisals or even ask for an appraisal without having an accurate survey, and an accurate survey that delineates numerous environmental constraints on that property, mostly due to its proximity to the West Branch or the Royal River. Whether it be open waters, floodplain, riparian buffers on each side of the stream, wetlands, wetland buffers. Those are all going to be very important factors in determining the value of, of that property, because most of this property is, is constrained by, by those features. So I would never move on to an appraisal without that accurate information.
So is this appropriating money to do both or just to?
Right, right now, it's.
Or is just to request?
Resolution doesn't appropriate anything for anything. It, it's, it's basically a, a test case or a, a test resolution to see if you have any interest at all. Obviously, in order for us to enter into a contract with an appraiser, a land surveyor or any other professional, we would have to negotiate that with a vendor, bring it before you as the council to approve in a resolution. So this doesn't deal with any money. The, the issue is, is this something the council is at all interested in, in pursuing the possible purchase of this land using open space trust fund funds? If not, I assume you're going to vote it down, if you're interested, you'll vote for it. If you're, if you're undecided, maybe you'll table this, I don't know. I mean, or I shouldn't say, shouldn't say table, postpone it to a specific.
Just, just so everybody knows, and even the people who are watching and the people here tonight, this is about 10 acres of property that's immediately south of, of Degnan Park. Not immediately, across the street on Hooper Avenue, but just a little bit further south. It, it's the continuation of the river which actually originates in, in Degnan Park.
South of Degnan?
Yeah, just south of Degnan Park.
By 280.
West of Carteret Street, behind the homes on Carteret Street, bound on the south by 280, and also behind homes on.
Oh, so you don't see it from Pleasant Valley Way?
Um, no, except right at the, the end of the exit ramp from 280 west onto Pleasant Valley Way north. And actually, I think that's where a Realtor has a sign posted, because that's the very extent of the frontage that they have on, on a public roadway is right at the end of that ramp, right at that stop sign.
Mr. Lepore, if I can, if I can ask through Council President, given the constraints on this property, is it developable?
I, I think that there are some upland areas behind homes on Westman Drive that could be developed. Accessing them, though it's a challenge because of the presence of the ramp, limited access or frontage on 280. I think most of the suggestions have been to acquire one of the homes on Westman Drive or acquire rights posted to get into that property.
I, I mean, I'm asking obviously because it may stay open space without us doing anything if it's not easily developed.
That was, that was discussed at, at the, the Open Space Committee, and it was even discussed that even if there were areas that could be developed, most of the areas of environmental concern are already regulated by, by the state and could not be developed.
Right. Which is why I was asking for a survey.
And even the, even the lands, as Mr. Lepore pointed out, at least from what I can see and from what Mr. Lepore said, the areas that might be potentially developable still have the problem of access. And I guess the larger question, the larger issue is whether it can be economically viable if you have to buy the, if you have to hold the entire property and only put just a few houses on a very small part of it. The vote at, the vote at the Open Space Meeting was, was five to three, so it was one vote away from not recommending to the council. So there's definitely feelings on the council side that, that this may not be good money because, and I think, Mr. Lepore, you were saying that, that, first of all, this money will eventually come out of the open space trust fund.
Right, and, and the town could also apply for, for grants for, for acquisition.
And you were saying that if we went forward with this and did a survey and actually had to get a couple of appraisals, and the reason we would get the two appraisals was because that would be required if we were looking for state funds, the green acre funds, to help with the acquisition.
You need, I'm sorry, was that two of, you only need two appraisals if it values above a certain amount of money, which is, I think, $250,000. We know that the asking price is a little over double that.
Double that.
But depending on the constraints or the, or the environmental constraints, could value considerably less than that.
And one of the things you said at the meeting was that the survey would be very good at identifying all of the, I used to call them environmental constraints that would just make most of this property undevelopable, and it's my opinion from what we know now that it, it just can't be developed. So I, I hesitate to use open space trust funds to, to do this if we're, there's a good chance that this is not developable. And he's asking $500,000.
That was the question that I had was, Mr. Lepore, would, would a survey actually be able to identify whether the property, or to what extent the property was developable?
I, I think you would want the survey to show as many environmental constraints as, as realistically it could. Actually, the state has some criteria for mapping that they want sent to an appraiser prior to, actually, they want to see the mapping of, of environmental constraints on the property, because apparently there's been cases in the past where value has been put on a property without constraints, and perhaps the, the state and the local entity has overpaid for, for property.
And.
And that's something they want to see here, and I think the more information you provide the appraiser, the better appraiser you're going to, appraiser you'll get.
But if, if the concern, if the concern is, is that the property might ultimately become developed, that's, you know, one of the concerns, why the town may purchase it was in order to make sure that it remains open space. You know, I guess the question would be, what would we do in our due diligence to make a determination whether or not the, the property is developable in whole or in part? So there may be some, for instance, I mean, certain, you know, it's a 10-acre piece of property, perhaps a subdivision of certain acreage could be taken off and developed, and if so, what would the town council's view of that be? You know, would they want to not see that and therefore acquire it for open space or not? There's some process we'd have to go through, wouldn't we, in order to, to make that call so that the town council could make a decision, understanding that poss, those possibilities?
Right, and I think some of the, some of the reasons the Open Space Committee would have or had to want to preserve this wasn't necessarily just dealing with protecting what could be developed, but concerns about the property that couldn't be developed, but a lot of that is already protected by, by state regulations.
So that's, my request really is just to have a survey so we can determine what is there. Just a survey.
So amend the language to do a survey?
Yes.
Well, I think, I think what council has said is that what.
It's in here.
It's in, it does include the survey.
No, I understand that, but there's an additional step.
And the administration could not move forward with an appraisal without coming back to council.
Right, but that's not in there. It says appraisal and survey.
So that's just, that, this is a, this, this resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, basically takes the temperature of the council.
Right.
It's, it's not, it's not authorizing anything. We would still have to come back on every step. We'd have to come back to hire an appraiser, we'd have to come back to hire a, a surveyor first, and then the appraiser. So, you know, council could say, well, okay, we, we only want to do the appraisal right now, I mean, the survey, the survey right now, because this, this resolution really doesn't do anything other than say what you're, what you'd like to see done, maybe in progression.
You don't need to change the resolution one word in order to accomplish what you want to accomplish.
Okay.
It's in there.
So that will give us the information to.
Let's look into it.
To determine. Okay.
If I say we hear you, it would be a step by step.
Step by step.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to adopt resolution 96, dash 14?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Councilman Sivella?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviat?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council president, according.
Yes.
Wait. Is that it?
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And we look forward to seeing everyone on Monday, May 26th, at 10 o'clock at our Memorial Day service ceremony.
And Sunday, June 7.
Right, we won't see anyone till June 7.